Don Blade from District Attorney's Office will be one of our presenters today. And thanks for being with us. Bruce, did you want to make any introduc- any comments to introduce this item?
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll have some comments after the presentation. We also have Michelle Cahias on the line, too, that can comment on the report as well.
Okay, so we do have Michelle. Is there anybody else on the line? Just Michelle?
That's all. She might have some of her staff on, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. All right, Don, we'll turn it over to you, and thank you for being here. I know it's the annual report and some disturbing information in here, but also, obviously, working to try to help us better understand some of the outcomes and the Y4s, and maybe to make some improvements that will hopefully prevent some of the things that were listed. I would just tell you that it seemed like you looked at a lot more cases this year than maybe in the past. I don't know, I just need to review.
That may be because the time period of the report actually was from 2019 to 2021. So we didn't give you a report during the COVID shutdown, and because some of the cases weren't getting through the case, their criminal justice system, we didn't have as many to review.
Okay.
Coroner's office was otherwise engaged, et cetera. So that's probably why you see more, but it also gave us a better database to work from than the annual. And we're considering, Michelle and I, Cahias have actually talked about trying to do a two-year, because I think it may give us better information than just a single snapshot of a year.
Okay, very good. Well, Don, if you want to just tell us who you are and how you get to be the chosen presenter along with Michelle here today, and then go right into your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Don Blade, and I'm an Assistant Chief Deputy District Attorney at the Sacramento County DA's office. I oversee the Sex Crimes and Family Violence Bureau, which includes elder abuse. We have one dedicated elder abuse prosecutor and a grant-funded elder abuse victim advocate that work exclusively on elder abuse cases involving neglect and physical abuse, and, to a lesser extent, financial abuse. So I'm here on behalf of the Elder Death Review Team. The Elder Death Review Team was established in 1999, and that team is a collaborative team of multi-agencies, both community-based and law enforcement, working together in Sacramento County. What we do is discuss Sacramento County's needs in areas of support, education, improved collaboration with respect to neglect and death, and even accidental death of our older population. The Death Review Team meets every other month, or six times a year. We collect cases and information that are reported to us through the coroner's office. Some of those may be just suspected issues of abuse or neglect, so we delve into them. Ultimately, some of them are concluded to be natural causes, or we look and we see, we probably think this is neglect, but we don't have enough information to prove this, or we know this is neglect, or this is criminal neglect or abuse, and we have actual criminal cases that resulted from those cases. So we're not able to talk about any potential criminal cases until they're through the system. And so some of the dates of the actual deaths are not necessarily reflective of the date of the report, but actually when the death was originally reported. As I said, this report covers 2019 to 2021, and what we found were some trends. Some trends with regard to elder abuse is, number one, it's increased in Sacramento County. As far as the District Attorney's Office is concerned, our filing of cases has increased. We filed 154 cases in 2020, 114 in 2021, and, or, excuse me, 154 in 2020, 114 in 2021, and 168 have already been filed. It may not seem like a jump, but on the year that we had lesser cases, I think that was attributable to many of the investigative resources that were devoted to other areas, and we weren't receiving as many reports to file from law enforcement. But we are seeing cases of abuse and neglect increasing in terms of their involvement in the criminal justice system. Of course, we're only seeing a sliver of these cases, the cases that were actually actively investigated by law enforcement and then referred to the DA's office for action or review. The next most common type of case, abuse, is the number one. That's where the investigative priorities lie. That's where the law enforcement does get involved. They make sure that investigations are completed. But oftentimes, the neglect cases, because they don't necessarily have the specific training to identify elder neglect, they don't necessarily know what they're looking for and what available evidence is out there to help make a case of this. That's both a training issue and a resource issue. On the training part, our elder abuse prosecutor, Tara Crable, is making the rounds and also has recently prepared a video for law enforcement training in order to educate our law enforcement officers in Sacramento County as to signs of abuse and neglect in elder situations. And our hope is that that will help increase those cases getting to us for review that have a meaningful investigation where we can make a filing decision or pursue criminal charges where it's warranted. The financial crimes against elders are not necessarily investigated to the extent that actual physical harm cases are investigated. So we don't see that many of those coming our way. I know that there has been, Adult Protective Services has gotten some funding and is doing work in that area. I'd like to see us do more, but with the resources we have at the DA's office, our focus has been on the violent crime aspect of elder care and elder abuse.
Don, could I just ask, excuse me just for a second while you're on that, because you talked about your staffing. You say you have one attorney, and then you'd said investigator that are assigned. What's your staffing ratio?
A victim advocate.
Victim advocate.
Yes.
And so you basically have you and one other prosecutor that handle all the cases, and you have other sex crimes as well, right?
I'm not the person who's hands-on. So I oversee the bureau. The bureau includes adult sexual assault, child abuse, elder abuse, domestic violence, human trafficking, and animal abuse. So that's my umbrella of bureaus. Under each of those is a supervisor and then assigned deputies. Under elder abuse, though, there's just a single attorney who's doing intake, who's then vertically prosecuting those cases, and then one victim advocate who is assisting. And you can imagine these cases, in terms of communication and outreach with elders, can take time. It's hard to communicate. Oftentimes, elders don't have a lot of people they talk to, so when they get the opportunity to speak with someone, those conversations become in-depth, and we want to be as respectful as we can when we're trying to provide services. So it's a lot of work for one person to be handling all of the calls and setting up resources for victims who are elder.
So, again, we're not getting too far a scans, but we're going to be talking about budget here in a couple of weeks. And I guess, as I read the report, again, there's, you know, a lot of this is to look back to try to help us going forward. But if we only have one prosecutor assigned, and where we have over 200,000 seniors in this community, but of course, it's dependent adults as well, so it's not just those that are
Right.
that are 60 or older, but that population's grown, as a stat was pointed out in the report. When I read these scenarios and vignettes of these situations, my God, I just, the way people have died, and some of it being neglect, some of it being maybe inexperience, but some pretty terrible things. I wouldn't wish this upon anybody, I guess, as I read some of these. And if we only have one prosecutor assigned, I guess, I don't know how this bumps up. Obviously, Anne Marie and her staff have to look at, you included her staff, how you assign folks, but it seems that we're, you know, way short of what we need to be, because it's one thing to have APS folks on the front line. But, and again, there are some cases here, and I'll ask you about them a little later on, at least I made note of a couple of them, where information wasn't presented to the DA, for example. You didn't know the person had been, had died before determination was made. You weren't going to pursue the case, because there was other factors involved, and we just have two sentences. So again, you know, how you evaluate those things, obviously, is much greater detail than what's represented here. But I guess the point I want to make is that if we're serious about doing something, certainly trying to prevent it to begin with, but to intervene if we can, you know, discover and build a system that helps us do that. But at the back end of it, where folks have died, in some cases, pretty horrible deaths, at least in their last days, it would seem to me that we need to be able to prosecute. I don't know what the caseload is for your one prosecutor, but in a county this size, if you have one person that can handle that, let alone get into court and have a case prepared, to hold folks accountable. It's not about just the criminal prosecution, but these are some terrible. I wouldn't want this to happen, certainly to anybody I know or family member, but to anybody, as I read these. And people that are elders, that are in their 70s, 80s, in a couple of cases, you know, were centenarians. And I, I guess, I just, I'm taken aback that we only have one, is it one person in your office with a victim advocate that handles all that caseload? And I don't know what the caseload is for your prosecutor. I guess that's part of my question.
Her caseload is pretty significantly high, and what we've had to do with her caseload, actually, is cases where there's not necessarily a typical dynamic, where maybe an elder is a victim of a robbery. It's not necessarily like an interfamilial. We have to give those to the felony team attorneys, because she can't do all of them. So you can be charged with committing an elder abuse crime just because of the age of the person who you inflicted a crime of violence. So there may be a crime of violence that occurred, and because the person is over the age of 65, they, we add this elder abuse.
Yeah, the gentleman was punched in the face of the gas station, the lady was knocked out of the store.
Exactly. So those cases go to other units, and we try and focus on the ones where there's kind of more dynamics at play. Typically, the majority of these cases involve family members who are perpetrating the violence and neglect. And so there's a lot of codependency there, a lot of dynamics similar to domestic violence. The elders don't want to prosecute their children, and so that type of intervention, it takes a little more time to really work through with them. We absolutely could benefit from having more than one dedicated prosecutor. We just, right now, at the office, we're really struggling with high caseloads in all of our specialized units because of some of the caseload holdover from the pandemic, and just simply because we have more violent crime occurring here.
You know, a couple of things that kind of jumped out to me, and I want you to be able to do your report here, but, you know, there was a case, one of these cases where there was good reason, believe there's criminal neglect. There was another one where, you know, it was a suspected homicide, not always family members, I don't think. In one of those cases, it wasn't a family member. And the other one that really got my attention, or a couple of these here, where you actually have either licensed workers, not IHHS, family members receiving pay, and/or facilities. And I know there's a whole state licensing regime and all that, but again, those folks, for a, you know, significant sum of money in most cases, are paid to take care of folks. And then you have these descriptions of people who battered, bruised, beaten, potentially, and die, and yet, there's no prosecution of that. There's really no follow-on to any degree. Again, turn somebody into licensing. And I guess, it seems to me, if we're going to have accountability for folks that are very vulnerable, and whether it's at the hands of family members or others, that, you know, one, there needs to be sufficient resources with the DA's office, but there needs to be sufficient resources with Adult Protective Services and any other agencies that are related here, because this is a growing population, and the vulnerabilities of folks, and again, I found your chart that listed the ages, you know, there's a large number kind of in that early entry at 60, 65, and then kind of spreads itself out. But to think of somebody who is well into their late 80s, 90s, even 100 years old, that are subject to some of these things that are in, of the 36 cases that you investigate, you know, and get in this report. Again, Bruce, you know, I've kind of given a precursor, but my expectation is, is that, one, that hopefully something, as it relates to budget and staffing resources, but also that, you know, we take this seriously. We haven't seen this report in a couple of years, but again, as I read this, some last night and some today, it's pretty disturbing. I mean, again, I wouldn't wish this upon anybody. And we're doing what we can, a lot of respects, and this doesn't negate any of the good work that's done at any of the levels, whether it's in prosecutorial arena, or in IHHS, or the facilities that do serve many hundreds, if not thousands, of people. But there needs to be some more accountability, because right now, for a variety of reasons, I think there's a real lack of accountability, not by design, but maybe just because of the way this, this system, the number of folks, but the number of cases speaks volumes to, I think, the point you're making earlier, Don, but the one that I took from this report as well, so.
No, I agree with you absolutely. And in some of those cases that you're mentioning, what happened was, there was an informational report taken, and then there was no follow-up investigation by law enforcement. So our, my understanding of both the police department and the sheriff's office, is there aren't a dedicated team of elder abuse detectives that are working. Those teams are also dedicated to child abuse, also dedicated to domestic violence. They're kind of more broad-based, and everyone is prioritizing where the investigation should take place. And what we've seen is a lack of follow-up, where we've had to chase down reports, we've had to ask to have an investigator assigned, and, and that's impacted our ability to have a meaningful case to review for prosecution, because if we don't have the investigation, things like crimes happening in a care home, I know, we had, we just had our EDR meeting, and there's a case that's not quite ripe, that I won't get into the details, but what I will say is, it was at a care facility, and the individual was taken to the ER, and the ER doctors noted significant physical abuse on, on this individual who was deceased. And the problem is, is without somebody identifying which one of the caregivers at the facility was the person to inflict the violence, when it happened, how it happened, and then the competing facts of, you know, elders are susceptible to falls. There's all kinds of, you know, built-in defenses to these crimes, so they're not as easy to prove as the facts are egregious and, and really horrifying for us to read, thinking of our own family members who are older, but thinking as a prosecutor, you know, I need to be able to prove each element and who did this beyond a reasonable doubt. And that takes a collaboration between us and law enforcement, each devoting those resources to making sure those cases are fully investigated. And if we can't have criminal culpability, that licensing has to shut these places down and make sure that they're not functioning.
I would concur with that, and, because my takeaway was kind of, you know, old, kind of out of the way, and maybe soon to be forgotten. And I just think that, you know, the work that's done here can't be any of those things. It needs to be a very, I think, poignant reminder of, you know, of how serious this is. And, yeah, you're right, there are circumstances sometimes that, you know, wouldn't lend themselves to what you said, to something that'd be prosecuted. But, you know, we have a, a growing number of seniors and at-risk folks in our communities, and obviously, we're more and more dependent upon individual care, which I agree with the independency and folks remaining in their home and so forth, but that accountability, because if not, I just think, you know, the report that you brought forward here today, from your review, will just be more voluminous in years to come, if we don't do something to try to stem this. And I think there's things being done, and that's part of the report. So I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation, but
That's okay.
This was pretty graphic, in my view, and I'm sure
I recognize that.
Yeah.
So Adult Protective Services and the Family Justice Center have also both shown an increase in service requests related to our older population. APS received 17,119 calls to the hotline during the fiscal year 2021. That's 121% increase in calls since 2013, 2014. After-hours calls have also increased. In terms of the active, open cases for abuse or neglect, they've gone up 72%. So Adult Protective Services is getting hit really hard by these numbers as well. And then, as, as you've already observed, the population of the county's elders are growing, and the IHSS program has also increased 19% since 2017, and it's expected each year to rise another 5%. In terms of the need, we have over 32,000 recipients of in-home support services in Sacramento County, and then we have an incredible shortage of care providers. So once again, we're seeing a shortage of the resource, and then an increase of the need, which also can contribute to these types of scenarios happening. Thirty-six deaths were studied. Page seven of the report showed the categorical breakdown. The largest number were accidental deaths. The next was homicide, or, excuse me, questionable neglect, then homicide, and then undetermined natural causes were both at about 11%. Suspicious deaths inconclusive about 8%, and then criminal neglect and abuse were only 3%. So that tells me that many times, when going through these cases, we have a frustration. Part of the EDR team collaboration is everyone talking about who had contact with this family or this care provider throughout the process. So did medical have contact? Did weave have contact? Did APS have contact? Who knew about this individual and their situation? And many times, nobody did, or limited people had exposure. The elders are isolated. They're not a part of community. Nobody is reaching out or knows the kind of level of care that they're receiving or not receiving. And this was, this results in us not having the right information to really decide where did the breakdown occur? Where could we have intervened? Where could we have maybe provided additional support? We had a number of categorical break, or issues or areas of concern, including homicide, of course, and there wasn't really a consistent theme. The homicides varied, from stranger to acts of violence to familial violence. We saw a number of falls. We saw water safety and fire safety issues. Again, the IHSS care providers who were either improperly trained, or incompetent, or unable because of substance abuse or other issues to provide the kind of care necessary. We saw abuse and neglect. We saw care facility deaths. And then we also saw a situation where there was a hospital discharge without a care plan that almost immediately resulted in the individual's death. So what, what is the public advice? Some of this is about reaching the public and educating them, is listening. Listening to older adults, reaching out to them and to the caregivers. Understand what challenges the family is facing, and try to find support for them. Report abuse, or suspected abuse, to local Adult Protective Services, to an ombudsman, or to the police or law enforcement agency. Use the hotlines. There's national elder abuse hotlines that are available. I have resources in the packet. And increase outreach and education to see the signs of elder abuse and how they're different from the normal aging process. Consistent bruising, shutting down, not wanting to talk about how injuries happened, seeing ulcers or bed sores happening on a repeated basis, or in a severe way. Those are situations where there needs to be intervention. Checking in, providing overburdened caregivers with support, giving counseling, relief care. Adult daycare programs are a great resource, and ability to not only have the person, elder or dependent adult, be seen by other individuals, but also to get that social outlet and to make sure that mentally, they're in the best place they can be. And of course, there is also drug and alcohol abuse and mental health issues by some of these caregivers that affects their ability to care. And those resources can additionally help limit these people in having that condition impact the people that they're trusted to care for. So what were risk factors we saw? Current diagnosis of the elder of mental illness or a loss of cognitive function. So if the elder is unable, or less able to tell us what's happening with them, how it's happening, how it's not happening, who's caring for them, when they last took their meds, that makes it difficult for us to assess what's going on. If they've had past abuse, or drugs, or alcohol, that can affect their cognitive abilities and abilities to communicate. Physical health issues.
Don, excuse me, just a few pauses for a minute. I think Supervisor Desmond wanted to ask a question, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Don. You know, we hear from you and on these cases, and then child abuse cases, and you are protecting the most vulnerable in our community, and I thank you for that, because it's, I can't imagine, it's an easy job. And this is, I concur with Chair Anatoli about how disturbing this is, the statistics, of course. And I had a few questions relating to the IHSS providers, you know, seven of the cases, seven of the 33 cases that you identify. And, and you have several suggestions here, and I, and I look forward to a discussion, you know, really on this board, on what, you know, what we could do, or some of, are there some suggestions here that we could carry out? But could you tell me, what, what kind of training do IHSS providers go through in terms of spotting abuse and neglect, and what are their reporting requirements as an IHSS?
I think Michelle might be in a better position to talk about that, or.
Well, I'll just offer some initial comments, Supervisor, then yes, Michelle can chime in. But as you may know, through our IHSS public authority, training occurs for IHSS providers. But I must tell you, when I look at this report, it raises a lot of questions. I mean, admittedly, we have 32,000 or so IHSS cases, so it's not, I wouldn't call it an indictment of the whole program.
Of course.
But it does raise concerns. And you will see, by the way, in the budget coming forward in June, some increases in both IHSS and APS, which I think can help the discussion, certainly. But I do think we need to look at that training curriculum, to explore what we might need to add to it, to try to address some of the identifiers and other things that might be necessary. I'm going to suggest to folks that they check with what other counties do on this, and see if there's anything we can buffer our training with, and what they might be doing in these situations. Again, I don't see it as an indictment as the whole program.
Absolutely.
But when you have these cases, it does suggest that there's something we need to follow up on here. If we get these additional staff, for example, it'll help us with our annual reviews of IHSS cases. And so we can certainly have discussions about how we best use those staff, assuming the board approves them. And if you don't mind, I'll ask Michelle just to weigh in briefly, too. Michelle, if you're on the line? I think she's on the line.
Good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon. This is Michelle Cahias. So the care providers are actually trained by the IHSS public administrator. So you hear each year from Executive Director John Kozitz. So his office is responsible for recruiting care providers and getting them on the IHSS provider registry. What I will do is follow up with him to find out what the specific training is that is provided. And, and I will also find out if that same training is provided to family members that are chosen by recipients of services for them to be their provider. So for example, if I say I will have my adult son be my provider, I have the right to make that choice. So I'll find out if he gets a different training than, say, a stranger that would come into my home and provide the care.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that. I mean, of course, there are a lot of family members that are IHSS providers, and then are subject to the, certainly the training and the oversight, but so many family members are not. And I, obviously, that's a big segment of the problem as well. And I agree with you, Bruce. This is in no way a criticism of IHSS, which I think is a terrific program, but we should always be evaluating and see how we can do it better. Another, and, you know, I remember there being a big issue with IHSS in terms of background checks that we did on IHSS providers. And there's, I think, some, been some push and pull over the years. I see that you have, you know, it looks like you are recommending that we take another look at some of the eligibility exclusion categories, which, you know, I would certainly support. But something else you had in here that I wasn't aware of, Don, is that a social worker from the county needs to make a visit every year to an IHS provider residence? And is that happening? And what is the feedback we're getting?
Admittedly, it is happening, but admittedly, Supervisor, like many counties, we've had a hard time keeping up with that. So these staffing increases that I mentioned will help, certainly. So we will be monitoring our situation when we get those staff. But it's also a question of what you do when you're out there, too. What, this report will really help us, I think, focus on the kinds of things that have to be reviewed.
That are happening, yeah.
And how we best use those staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Just before you leave that, though, you get to open the door with your question about, and again, there were seven specific cases that referenced IHHS, but they weren't all family members. And there was, you know, a couple here where there'd been a history prior, and, but then reports either weren't given to DA's office. And again, the conditions, some of these folks who were the, you know, I say the victims, the ones that, you know, the elders that passed away were just, you know, again, I don't need to be graphic by description or in a report, but they were just terrible. I mean, the human condition, the physical condition, and not the mental. And how that, you know, can continue to occur, particularly with folks that either are licensed, because there was another one in the care home, where I think it was, the comment was that, you know, that there was some history of the operator or caretaker of being aggressive, or something in that of
Abusive.
Abusive. And so how does, you know, again, you know, it's not all in the DA's realm, or even in APS's realm. APS's realm, but if we know that, then, and there's continued to, I, again, unless there was some criminal prosecution and we're licensed revocation, they're probably still providing services a day, for all I know. Well, that's wrong.
If I may, Supervisor, I think another follow-up for us is to continue our discussion with state licensing staff on this. My experience is sometimes that unless you push hard with some of those folks, you don't get the kind of follow-up that you might. So, I think that's another area that we need to look at. Use this report for some discussion with them as well.
Well, you know, I would go as far to say, because, again, in my experience, I probably wouldn't be as gentle in my description as you are there, Bruce, but is that, again, and maybe watch what we ask for, but if we really are concerned, that, you know, the state has the licensure requirements. But I would think that if a local jurisdiction, i.e. the county of Sacramento.
Yeah.
Wanted to get involved, not necessarily we'd be the licensee agent, because that's not our role, but that if we wanted to have some ability, maybe delegated or deputized ability, we ought to seek that. You know, again, there's a cost associated with it, but there's a cost associated, a human cost, if we don't seek to do more. And I would suggest that beyond just, you know, I can tell you over the years, you know, I've had the opportunity on a few issues, and again, I won't say that the state folks haven't been unresponsive, but not unlike what Dawn describes, or what you would describe, that, well, we got, it's a big state, we only got X amount, blah, blah, blah. You know, if you file a complaint, we have to respond in 10 days. And, yeah, and they do, they do follow up. But I guess some of this has urgency, that if folks don't get attended to, the gentleman who got released from the hospital, who, you know, if there'd been a home healthcare agency notified, but he declined, and he was dead in a few days. And so, some of these are more ongoing. I guess what I would suggest to what you just said, that maybe we ought to have a serious conversation. Again, it certainly will have budgetary impacts. But again, it may be the right thing to do, that if we want to step up and be a leader in this regard, then maybe we insert ourselves, again, hopefully, they would welcome us to do that, to be, play a more active role when it comes to licensure. And certainly at IHHS, we license, you know, we're the ones, we're the, you know, the responsible entity for 32,000 caregivers. And, but when it comes to homes and some of these facilities, some of them are licensed. And the other thing is, a lot of them have not gotten away of licensure. Now, we're finding many, many unlicensed facilities. But this, in this one case, they had a history. And, you know, nothing happened. The person died, and no report filed, you know, DA didn't have anything to go off of. And so, I guess I would just ask, maybe we take a more serious look at this, you know, it has financial implications, but it has human implications if we don't try to do more, so.
I might just add one more comment, Supervisor. That is, we will take a look at the background check, aspects of this that you brought up, and the speaker brought up as well. I know they're there. Worth looking at, absolutely.
Okay.
It's more than worth looking at. We had one of these cases where it was clear that an IHSS worker was involved in neglect, but it wasn't something we could criminally prosecute. Our elder abuse prosecutor contacted IHSS and said, hey, this person is concerning. We want to make sure she's not still a care provider. And we're told that there's nothing they can do without a specific criminal conviction or finding a financial fraud. They're not excluded from being a provider. So, even if we have seen and documented a history where the person has been involved in a case of neglect or abuse, without a formal criminal conviction, they're going to be able to continue to be an IHSS provider. There needs to be more discretion in IHSS in not only limiting who is, you can have a violent criminal history, but as long as it's not related to elder or finance, you can be an IHSS provider. So, I feel like there needs to be more discretion to limit who is capable, not experiencing current mental health or substance abuse issues, and does not have a violent criminal history, or a history of abuse or neglect in providing care for elders. And all of those components should be something that are examined before someone is anointed, the caregiver, at county expense to provide care.
Well, right, because we basically give the, I guess, the blanket approval.
Right.
That this person's trustworthy, to the degree that they haven't gone as far as you've just described, but they're paid with public dollars. It's all of our tax dollars that are paying, but in many ca, you know, in the overwhelming, you know, number of cases, people are getting care in an independent setting that's, you know, good and allows them to have dignity for all their many years of their life. But in these cases, and ones that obviously aren't in this report, you know, and it may be a small fraction, but, you know, it's, you know, it's graphic and it's inhumane. I'll just say that. I mean, it is, you know, and to the point of people maybe dying at the hands of others. And then the one person makes a comment that, well, I didn't turn the person's conditions and didn't take them to the hospital because I was worried about the paycheck. It's like, what?
It's not uncommon. Because that is there, so, that's, which is why that's one of the warning signs, is if there is a care provider who's financially dependent on the elder, they have a motive not to seek assistance if it's going to potentially lead to the elder being put into a rehabilitation facility, or some other kind of skilled nursing facility where they need more care, and then those dollars stop. And if that's the only income source, that's, that's a dynamic that is going to inure to the benefit of the provider and not the elder.
Yeah. Supervisor Serna. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking forward to hearing more from you, but I think the discussion is a good one. Question for Bruce. Remind me, Bruce, we have IHSS eligibility workers, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, their responsibility is what? To go to a household that's interested in having the service? And the eligibility worker presumably, what they do comes from state statute in terms of.
Correct.
How they determine.
Right.
Yes or no on the ability to provide the service? Is there anything in state law that we know of that prohibits a county from augmenting the eligibility protocols to, for instance, also look at the, the mental acuity of the individual who would be receiving the care and presumably has a say in whether they like, you know, a potential service provider or not? Because what I'm reading in some of these instances, maybe many of them, is that you have someone that's elderly that needs the care, but perhaps lacks the cognitive ability to make a, you know, an informed decision about the quality of the care that they would receive. So, my question again is, is there anything that keeps us from maybe looking at those protocols to augment on occasion the, not just the eligibility determination, all the boxes that need to be checked, per se, but also having maybe a, you know, county psychiatrist or psychologist perhaps provide some kind of additional assessment so that we know that the person that needs the care can participate in determining who provides it?
It's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to ask Michelle to weigh in on that, whether or not, Michelle, we're precluded from supplementing those eligibility criteria. Could you speak to that?
So, I would need to follow up on whether we can enhance it. I think, I think you all remember that it is an eligibility program with some pretty, you know, finite areas for us to address. But I will definitely follow up. My understanding is that when the IHSS eligibility workers go out, they assess, you know, the needs of the individual, of the recipient, to determine the number of hours that they will receive. They also do an assessment as to their memory orientation, orientation, their judgment, so kind of a soft cognitive assessment, if you will, just to determine where they are in that area. But again, I can follow up.
You know, Supervisor, I just might add that if we find in our follow-up that there's some kind of statutory issue that might get in our way, that might be something we want to look at, was our delegation to see what we can do with that. Typically, typically with state programs, if you want to add to the eligibility criteria, there's usually some room to do that. But we'll have to explore it, as Michelle said.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You know, I think, too, we have to remember that even, even though someone who is seeking IHSS care for the first time, may present differently in a number of years afterwards in terms of their cognitive ability. And I know, I know, I think it's mentioned here, that the only requirement is for IHSS to come out once a year to, I guess, reassess things. But maybe there's something we could affect, whether it's, you know, changing state law with regards to how to assess the mental acuity of someone, to include more frequent assessments or something like that, once it becomes clear someone's having problems with memory, or, you know, recognizing folks, that kind of thing. It seems to me that there's too much, there are too many common denominators with this report around those instances where there's questionable abuse or neglect, and the fact that the person, you know, receiving the care perhaps wasn't 100% able to, to make that decision for himself or herself about who provides that care.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost.
Hey, Chair. I apologize for being late, so if I repeat something that's been said, it's probably worth repeating anyway. The, first of all, I share all of the concerns that have been, and the ideas that have been spoken up here today. I recently met with a bunch of, and forgive me if I slip into IHSS, I do that all the time, with a bunch of IHHS workers, and recently, as did Mr. Serna. And, you know, some of the concerns that were shared with me were really shocking to me, and not necessarily on the, on the county, but from the statewide level. And that was, as has been alluded to, the level of training. I mean, things as simple as the ability to give an injection. You know, as somebody who raised a diabetic daughter, I was very well-trained in how to give injections several times a day. And these folks, a lot of them were complaining and saying, you know, we've never been told how to do that. And that's so basic, and shows a real flaw. And again, I'm not pointing the fingers at our staff, but it's a flaw in the system. So, I do think that we need to look very closely and scrutinize where our holes are. And if it is a question of going to the state and, you know, asking for further training dollars, and it should come with dollars, by the way, and requirements, then, you know, I think we need to uncover those stones.
You know, Supervisor, I just might add that my experience, the focus at the state level has, I think, been more focused on IHSS fraud and things like that, which is not unimportant. Believe me, that's not unimportant, but less so on the kinds of issues that you're raising, quite frankly. So, it's worth a discussion, an aggressive discussion, to see what we can do about that.
Good. Thanks, Patrick.
Agreed. So, you've, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Dawn.
That's okay.
I just wanted to just add briefly that in-home care is probably one of the most challenging things to do, spoken by someone who took care of both of my moms till they died, and who has been exposed to that 24-hour-a-day personal care, where you're, you're taking care of the mind and the body and the spirit. And it's, it's a heavy lift for people who don't really make a ton of money, and may not have the opportunity for the training. So, I think the idea of, you know, training and then making sure that we're not only evaluating the in-home care provider, but the individual who's being cared for, you know, some, like if someone has dementia, they may have periods of extreme anger, or, you know, they have, they have challenges themselves that are really hard to deal with. And so, making sure that, I don't know, I don't know if there's a screening process. I mean, I'm assuming we're screening the person being cared for so we know it takes someone who can manage, we're giving them the heads up on what they're walking into and what could happen. But I like the idea of more training and maybe even some incentives. If they get more training, they get a little bonus or something. It might improve the care that we're giving in Sacramento County.
Thanks, Supervisor Frost. Okay. Dawn, thanks.
So, I think we've all talked about and identified the issues with the IHSS providers. And it is not only an assessment of the elder who's needing the care and their ability to choose, and if there's any undue influence on that choice, and then also the training and capacity of the person providing the care. So, it's kind of a twofold we need to focus on, and I think we've explored that here. But it is, as we saw in this report, a critical need. Also, with respect to not just home service providers, but individuals who are not maintaining their medical care. We saw some situations where there were elders who clearly had a myriad of health issues, who had not been to a medical facility in a year, sometimes longer. So, I don't know if there can be requirements added that there is a regular checkup or a regular doctor visit, so that we know that a medical professional is seeing the elder in addition to the care providers, so that we have a better idea of what's happening. We had one case where medication just was stopped, the son just decided to stop giving it. We have other cases where the person just had not seen a doctor, and so, we don't know how long the issues of neglect were going on. So, that's the, that's what can happen when elders are isolated, when they're not having contact with anyone outside the home. So, the more that we can encourage people in the public and people in the professions that have contact with older folks, to make sure that they reach out to them and make sure that they're getting regular medical care, having access to mental health services on both sides, respite care for care providers, making sure that senior centers are open, daycare centers help provide relief to the care provider, and also exposure of the elder to other people, that they may be able to develop trust and, and talk about if there is abuse or neglect going on at the home. These are all ways that we can perhaps intervene in these situations in the future. We also had difficulty, we've had a transition in coroner's office, parties who are participating in EDR, and there have been, and I was new to the team for this report as well. Paul Dernberger was the bureau chief previously, and he literally left the day we shut down. So, there wasn't a lot of transition going on. And, and there was some changes in the coroner's office as well. And so, we're working together now to make sure that we're getting all the cases, because we weren't seeing cases get referred to us, and our docket was shrinking. And we couldn't figure out why we weren't having new cases to talk about, because we know there's elder deaths in the county happening. So, we're working on, I'm meeting with the coroner's office and kind of talking about the intake forms, and making sure that we get those cases to the team to talk about. And that also oftentimes helps identify cases that maybe didn't get to law enforcement properly, or where we can ask law enforcement to follow up on an investigation. And at the same time, we're doing education and outreach to the law enforcement agencies to make sure that they're investigating these cases, and they're doing so properly and getting the cases to us. But without the referrals, we don't have the data to obtain the information with regard to what elder deaths have happened. I tried to get statistics from the coroner's office, just so we could see a snapshot in Sacramento County during the relevant time period of natural deaths, accidental deaths in the county as a whole, and I haven't been able to get that data. So, we're going to work together and see if, because I think that would be meaningful as well, to understand what percentage of our deaths are happening in each of these categories, not just from the EDR perspective, but in the county as a whole. So, one of the recommendations, and that we're already working on, is to work more collaboratively with the coroner's office and law enforcement to make sure that these cases are getting referred the way that they should be, and that we're collecting the data that can help us in the future. We also want to reduce danger and prevention through education, and that's with respect to financial abuse and accidental deaths. We talked about water safety, fire safety, fall safety, both in facilities and in home environments. And those are topics that can always benefit from additional education of the public. So, we will continue to work with our partners and hope to better address the issues of elder neglect and abuse in Sacramento. We want to protect our older population, and of course, make sure that we reduce the number of preventable deaths, and avoid the kind of scenarios that you saw in these summaries. I know they're heartbreaking, and some of them are horrifying. One of the One of the other issues, and I'm not sure, this is a statutory thing, we think we've decided, but there were a few cases we've seen where the caregiver kept the elder at home after they were deceased.
Body was there for weeks and months.
Weeks and months. And there's really not a crime committed. So there's not a timeframe with which you have to report death under those circumstances. So we're trying to figure out where the lapse is in that requirement to make sure that we don't have a loss of evidence and information, or that an elder is sitting home decomposing, and we have no way to find out how it is that they died and whether it was by natural causes or some other means. So that was another issue that we were surprised to see in our view of the cases. Are there any other questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Don. Let me see if there's any other questions at this juncture. I know we kind of punctuated throughout your presentation, so if you want to stand by, and then I think Michelle may want to offer some additional, and there may be some more questions. So again, thanks to the team, and I think it's really important, I just, as you noted, to be sure that there's continuity when it comes to, you know, turnover, longtime, you know, involvement by certain staff members that have, you know, headed up the effort, and then kind of something gets lost in transition. Obviously, COVID had some impact to probably the handoff in your offices. But I think it's really important, this effort has been ongoing, and nothing else that gives us this forum, certainly to talk about, you know, what has happened, what reviews have shown, and certainly where we can stand to make changes that hopefully impact positively on people's lives, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Don. Okay. Bruce, I'm going to turn and get Michelle on the phone.
Michelle, if you could offer some final comments, please?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I just, I want to say thank you to Don and her team. As she said, she was kind of thrown into this just because of Paul's departure right at the pandemic, at the beginning of the pandemic. And I just really appreciate the efforts put into the discussions as well as to the report. And as she indicated, we'll be working together to just kind of strengthen the process so that it can, it can really be used to help inform improvement efforts. I am deeply grateful and appreciative of all the comments today and of Don and her team and the overall interest in promoting the safety, health, and well-being of our older adults and our dependent adults. So I'll just say a couple of things. Bruce mentioned that there, we are requesting additional positions for APS. As, as you know, the age for which APS will go out and investigate abuse and neglect is 60 now instead of 65. So you will see in the budget a request for positions that will strengthen our operations as well as allow us the ability to provide case management services where we may be able to attend to some more issues. We are also asking for additional IHSS positions, and that is such a complicated program. And I hate to throw this out there, but I might, I might just throw out that at some point, we might want to have an IHSS workshop because there are so many moving parts. I will say that for the IHSS care providers, the California Department of Social Services has developed a care provider training that's expected to roll out in the fall. I haven't seen the curriculum, so I can't speak to what's in it, but I will certainly follow up to get a little bit more information on it. And then, and then the other piece that has been mentioned, and it is a frustration for me as well, is that, that sometimes there are, there is abuse in the home, and the older adults don't want to prosecute because oftentimes it is a family member. And it is interesting with just the similar dynamics with kids and child abuse, where they don't want their parents to get in trouble. The difference is, even when we know there's an older adult being abused or neglected, we do not have the authority to remove them because they're an adult. And so we, we do everything we can to help address safety and well-being, but it is definitely a challenging situation. And then, and just the follow-up area is that I will go into is looking at the actual training currently provided for providers as well as family members. As the discussions have noted, there are family members who have been abusive. And what is really difficult and challenging with this program is that the recipient is the employer, and they have the right to hire or fire the providers, the care providers. They also have the ability to waive some of the crimes that preclude a provider from being a care provider. So I, you know, definitely there are some areas where I think it would be legislative fixes, but certainly areas where the, the entire program can be strengthened because with our aging population, we know that it will continue growing.
Thank you, Michelle. Let me go to board members. Any other thoughts or questions? One thing comes to my mind, I think that as a result of this, you know, the report, some of the things we talked about, certainly you've heard expressions of concern and some suggestions and questions from board members, I think maybe as a follow-on, we ought to have a summary of maybe some actionable items that either could, you know, certainly tie in with our budget discussions around programmatic elements and certainly support in that way. But also, we've talked about state licensing, we've talked about training, we've talked about other ways to intervene and some of the considerations. So Bruce, not to task you or anyone else, but I think oftentimes we have these discussions, and then, you know, it's fruitful to the degree that there's some follow-up. But I do think, maybe as a matter of course here, that if that summary could be, you know, prepared by you or somebody under your authorities, or maybe Michelle's authority, and then keep this board posted on, you know, where we can weigh in. If it's a legislative approach, then certainly that would come to us in one context. If it's a budget issue, whether it's recommended or not, that's another, if it's state licensing, if it's training. Again, there's multiple fronts here, and so without burdening you or anybody else with more work, I think that if we kind of coalesce this, certainly in light of the seriousness of, you know, the way this report's presented and taken into account, that would be helpful. So I don't know if any.
Good suggestion, Mr. Chairman. We'll do that, definitely. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. Any other member of the board then? If not, then thank you, Don, thank you, Michelle, Bruce, all the folks that have worked on this. And as gruesome as it may be, I think it certainly provides a good foundation to continue to try to do our best to help those that are most vulnerable in our community. So thanks again.